Good afternoon and welcome to our school board special meeting. The time is now 2:00 PM. The school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Burgess?
Here.
Carol Hubbard?
Here.
Dr. Doran?
Here.
Stulean?
Here.
Maple?
Here.
Hardy?
Here.
Burnett?
Here.
Thank you. The board has a call.
Thank you. Up next, the board will move into our approval of our adoption of the FY26 School District approved budget. And we will turn the floor over to Mr. DeGraw or Dr. Minor first, and then Mr. DeGraw.
President Burnett, and we will hand it over to Mr. DeGraw here shortly. Just wanted to make a couple of statements. The recommended motion, resolution, and memo this afternoon are all based on our board's work session last night and the conversations that we heard and took away from that. It reflects what sounded like at the time, the majority of board members leaning in favor of cutting the vacant Star of the North teacher position, an investment in the Coalition for Education Equity, and bringing a lawsuit against the state for inadequate education funding, and then balancing the rest of the approved budget with $1,729,253 to balance the FY26 budget. Mr. DeGraw will go over the resolution and the memo that are in the board packet this afternoon, and then we'll turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Minor. So as he mentioned, you have two documents that are included in the packet. One is a memo to the Board of Education from Dr. Minor. The top portion of that memo is language that articulates the main high-level changes. Important to note, these are changes from the recommended budget to the approved budget. We talked a lot of, things changed in between recommended and approved when HB57 was passed by the legislature. And so we kind of got tripped up in my office. We're not talking changes from HB57. We're talking changes from the recommended budget that the board approved back in March. So the bottom half of that memo outlines the numbers of the upper portion. So you have changes to revenue and then expenditures. The changes to revenue, the increased local contribution of $2.78 million, increased federal impact aid revenue of $650,000, reduced foundation funding of a little more than $4.5 million. There's an adjustment to Ters and Pers on behalf. So on behalf payments from the state are payments that support the state pension plan, the shortfall there between the funded portion and the outstanding liabilities of that pension plan. So you'll see the same number in both revenues and expenditures, one little over $1.9 million is what that'll be from the state next year. And then the fund balance utilization, the Dr. Minor referenced, $1,729,253. The expenditure portion shows the $125,000 contribution to the pending potential lawsuit. Increased charter school allocations, so that is an increase, not a decrease. We talked about it being a $300,000 decrease. But again, that was from HB57 passage. So important to note, when the board approved the recommended budget, we still had, we were still only allocating half of a 680 increase to charters. So it actually is an increase at a $500 permanent BSA increase of $424,000. Miscellaneous staffing adjustments, this includes the reduction of the Star of the North head teacher, and there are probably 20 to 30 random miscellaneous staffing adjustments district-wide between the recommended budget and the approved budget. And so that's a net total increase of $33,000. And then there's the mirroring expenditures of the Ters and Pers on behalf contribution from the state. So total increase of $2,518,170 from the recommended budget to the approved budget, total net increase of that amount. The next document there is the resolution, so the whereas resolution for the approved budget, shows all fund total of a little more than $230,000 up near the top. And then it goes through the various funds that we have within the district, the main fund and page one being the operating fund of $194,916,462, both revenues and expenditures shown there by function. And then the next page shows the two other budgeted funds. So the board, you as a body are approving the revenues and expenditures of three funds, the operating fund, the transportation fund, and the nutrition services fund. And so the transportation and nutrition services funds are on page two, both revenues and expenditures. And then after that, there's a series of what we call non-budgeted funds. Those are estimated amounts for activities or club accounts district-wide, local grants, state-level grants, and federal grants. And then those are shown on page three. And then page four is a series of other less common funds that the board, again, doesn't approve budgets for. And then we get to the bottom for signatures. That is the resolution for the final approved budget for FY26. So those are the two documents you have. I can answer any questions if there are any Dr. Minor mentioned. You have motion language in the agenda. And these documents would stand if the board approves the budget as, as Dr. Minor mentioned, as we have presented here. As the board works and has conversations, discussions, if amendments occur, we will be documenting those changes. And we would need, if there's any changes, we'll need hopefully a short recess. If, if there's nothing that comes quote-unquote out of left field today, if it's items that we've discussed up to now, especially last evening, the recess should be relatively short. It's pretty straightforward. We have, we have everything kind of in the hopper, ready to go. If something came out of left field that we had no plan and anticipation of, it might be a little bit longer just for us to run numbers and do that work behind the scenes. So I think that's all I have. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions from the board. Mr. Doran?
Want to get some clarifications for changes from last night. So right now, the recommended shows cuts for Star of the North and the MAP Science Report. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then the investment for Coalition.
And the investment for the Coalition for Education Equity.
That's correct. That's what the two documents and the motion language is built off of.
Okay. And the increase to the draw upon from the fund balance is particularly the, is just moving the one vacancy position on secondary and the five vacant positions in elementary to, that's just a switch over to that fund balance, draw upon fund balance.
Correct. Eliminating those reductions and shifting them to fund balance. That's correct.
If I might follow up.
Follow up, Mr. Doran.
Administration. And, and it might get more into the motion later, so let me know that for debate around that. The administration recommendation last night was that we don't have as large a draw up on the fund balance. Your recommendation, I guess I'm looking for a distinction between a recommendation or trying to say, what's the will of the board? And you were trying to capture that conversation last night.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So we were trying to capture the conversation and where it sounded like a lot of the board members were at last evening. And so that's what's reflected currently in the documents and, you know, the recommended motion language. You know, it still would be my recommendation to close out the vacant positions that I recommended yesterday. I do think it's a reasonable closeout. I know it could potentially raise class sizes by .5 in the elementary school, but those class sizes might already raise because of the positions being vacant at this time and having a difficulty hiring teachers at this late of stage in the hiring cycle. With that said, I don't think it's inappropriate for the board to use fund balance if the board feels like they want to have administration continue to recruit for those positions and try to fill them. I'm comfortable with the level of fund balance that we have. And so if that's the direction of the board, then I'm fully supportive of that as well.
Thank you. Put me back to you.
Mrs. Hardy?
Just on that same vein, through the chair to the administration, making sure everybody understands it, us drawing on fund balance, if those positions remain unfilled, then that fund balance doesn't get drawn on. So it just remains its same part of that budgeting for vacancies. But if we were to remove those positions, then we stop recruiting and there is no opportunity for those positions to be filled.
That's correct.
I can talk about my feelings on that later.
We could save it for debate. Any other clarify, Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you. Through the chair to the administration, I think it's just really important that we talk about whole numbers of where we are and the fact that right now we're sitting at, looking at a deficit of $1.75 million. And that's what, that's what this resolution is hoping to address. Earlier this month, at the 9th of June work session, at that point, we had a surplus of $2.5 million because of the additional support from the local contribution and the assembly of, of a $2.78 million. When the governor line item vetoed after his original veto of House Bill 57 was overridden, that veto, that line item veto of the BSA gave us a $4.5 million deficit. But because we were sitting in a place where we had a little bit of overage, and also because the money came through the BSA, and so we have to give more to charters, which is good, we now have a deficit of $1.75 million. So we're sitting here today grappling with the deficit because of a line item veto, not because of any doing of our own. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I think it's important, you know, we went over this last night. The boards already worked through a very arduous budgeting process that started in November. And the boards worked through cuts after cuts after cuts that totaled $16 million. And now we're back at the table having to face additional cuts of $1.75 million.
Follow up, Mrs. Dulean?
Yeah, I'd like to just, how many consecutive years have we been in a deficit?
Mr. DeGraw might know the history more than me, but.
Yeah, ever since I've been here, which is, this might be my eighth budget cycle. So I would say 10 plus years, yeah, at least 10 years.
And if I can ask about how much money has this board and previous boards had to cut from our education budget leading up to today?
I would say in the range of 40, 50 million total, you know, in the last 10 years.
Okay. And if, and if the administration might say some of the programs that were cut leading up to today, or some of the things that we've had to cut from our students, I think is really important.
Yeah, certainly not an exhaustive list. And so I apologize if I miss anything as we're going down that. But the board's closed seven schools, which has certainly impacted our community. We no longer have elementary band and orchestra at most of our elementary schools. We don't have art. We had, used to have a pretty robust art program in our elementary schools. We no longer have a comprehensive gifted and talented program in our elementary schools. Class sizes have risen steadily. I think over the last decade in high school, class sizes have risen by more than 10 students, which has impacted the quality of education that we've been able to provide our students. We've heard from our CTE teachers this year that CTE courses are being cut due to section courses going away and class sizes going up. And I'm certain there's additional cuts that, you know, the board has made to specific student programs over time. But yeah, it's been a hard go for our school districts and school districts around the state due to inadequate funding from the state level.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Mr. Doran?
Okay, thank you. If I might just offer a little bit of an historical perspective to the question that was there. Actually, it's been more over 20 years that we have been cutting consistently, or that, and it was about 20 years as the result of the A+ Task Force, which was really a handshake agreement, legislature business, education, associations, parents, et cetera, that we sourced some addition really to funding after several decades of cuts prior to that. And since then, we have been cutting. And I'm very mindful of a superintendent candidate, I believe it was 2011, 2012, who sat here and told the board in his interview that you will be looking at $16 million, $16 million cut within the next two years. And he was right on target. There have been some increases to the BSA during that time, but never enough to make up for the deficits. And so we've been on a consistent track. And Mr. DeGraw and I have often tallied around how much money we've cut. And it's just been the last, about the last five years, we've exceeded 50 million. And as he well talked in his experience, he has never had that opportunity to say, oh, yes, you can do more. So I think it's well taken by board minor comments that we are in dire straits. And, and I appreciate bringing that to the fore. And I guess I'm going to ask a process question for this afternoon. I may have a clarification, but I do have a real concern on the draw from the fund balance. I go back and forth in my mind whether it's appropriate, whether we do it, when we do the resolution, if we have any amendments to how we get there. I don't have an issue with the bottom, I don't think it impacts the bottom line numbers in the resolution. So that's why I asked the question, whether you want to address that now or later.
So I, that would be part of debate. And so if, once the board is finished asking their preliminary questions, I would like the board to bring forward the motion, and then we can go from there in debate and do it that way, Mr. Doran.
That's fine. I think, you know, yeah, that's fine. Great. Thank you. Then just a clarification, so I understand, when I look at the full budget, Mr. DeGraw, it's 1.7 that you're recommend, that you're suggesting tonight, this afternoon, that we take out of the general fund. We have 1.1 rounding numbers that is in the vacancy line item.
Yes.
Okay. And would you clarify for me on that 1.1? When we, when we budget for vacancies, if we do not see savings from vacancies, which are temporary, as we're transitioning, if we do not see savings in that, that will come out of the general fund upfront. That's the backfill.
That's correct.
The other side of that is that if we do see savings from the vacancies, that means less money in the fund balance to carry forward. You're actually, it's out of fund balance at either end.
Correct.
Right now, we've taken it out at the front end. But if we, but otherwise, it comes out at the back end.
That is correct. It reduces a surplus and increases a deficit regardless. I think that's the point you're trying to make. That's correct.
Thank you. And then we have about $500,000 that you're anticipating we'll need out of fund balance for transportation.
Potentially, yes.
So I come up with about 3.3 million that we're taking out of fund balance. We're back, we're, we're effectively using fund balance to cover.
I would, I would have the word potentially infused in there. We're potentially on the hook for that amount of fund balance.
Okay. But with the 1.7, we definitely are.
Well.
If that's what we decide tonight.
So I think it's, I'll respond to that if that's okay. I think it's important to note that none of this is set in stone, depending on a number of different factors. So it's important to note that these are all estimates and projections at this point, that our enrollment is a projection.
Right.
The number of vacancies on average throughout the year is an unknown at this point. The overall spending of the district is unknown in many different arenas. So it's, it's 100% accurate to say we're potentially on the hook. And all of those are potential. None of them are set in stone.
Right. Yeah. We don't spend money. We, it's only an estimate. Right.
Correct. Yeah.
Everything, we, we understand that. So.
But we've budgeted for those amounts.
Alody is, we're looking at using up to 3.3 million.
Yes.
Without any unforeseen circumstances.
Correct.
And two points, just to make sure, and in keeping with this, you're projecting about 11 million, give or take, at the end of this year in fund balance.
Yep.
Once all our bills are paid, about.
Between 10 and 12, yes.
Right. So between 10 and 12, let's take the 11. 3 million, we've basically earmarked for other things if this passes. So that brings us to an 8 million at the estimated, projected.
Right. Yeah.
At the end of the 26th year to carry forward.
Correct.
And if I can, to the administration, if we see an increase in enrollment, and we need to hire teachers as we get, especially at the beginning of the school year, we get to count day, we will fund, I know the, confirm for me that the district practice is we will fund those out of fund balance. And yes, we will get that back in the spring based on the change in enrollment.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Mr. Burgess and then Ms. Dulean.
Thank you. Through the chair, the state revenue line in the, in the resolution, 116,445,000 and some change. Is that based on a $500 increase in keeping with the governor's veto, line item veto?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And just for clarity, the foundation revenue is right around 100 million, a little less than 100 million. And then the biggest portion aside from that is those on behalf payments, 14, 15 million dollars of on behalf payments. So.
Thank you.
That's, that's based on 500 BSA.
What, follow up? What would that figure be if the BSA were still at 700 like the legislature set?
Yeah, it would be at about 121 million would be that number.
Can you get me a more exact number?
4.5 something odd million dollars. So if you go back to the memo.
Follow.
The reduced foundation funding in the memo, 4,578,752. There's the difference right there.
Thank you.
So yeah, about 100, total state revenue would be about 121-ish.
Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you so much. I will just ask a little bit about, because I brought forward the idea to the board. And I'm grateful that we, with working as a board together through the budget process and also with the administration, that we voted through the budget process to include a 0.65% vacancy rate of, how many total employees do we have around in an estimate?
General fund, so it's in the, between 1300 and 1400-ish, including grants, 14 to 1500.
So I, and you know, in, in this idea for this including a negative contingency or a vacancy rate, and then counting against that, when you put forward a budget, in the, in previous years, we assumed that every single job would be filled 100% of the time, every single day of the year that we have it budgeted and the money's there. However, it is, and we, when, when we reviewed this, it is reasonable to expect that you'll have vacancies. And it doesn't have to be a vacancy for a whole year, but it can be vacancies here and there. Things happen. We also have a lot of vacancies in, in different programs, for instance, with SED. But I'm really excited that we're hiring on a daily basis for that. And we don't want to have those vacancies. This is not something that we want. But it's reasonable. And it's nobody's fault that vacancies occur. So I'm glad that we voted as a board during this budget process to assume that we will have about a 0.65% vacancy rate. Right now, other school districts, for instance, Mat-Su. Right now, other school districts, for instance, Matt Sue, they project between a 2% and 4% vacancy rate now for several years and have had success in not making unnecessary cuts on the front end of their budget and then taking potential savings that could go into fund balance in their future and counting against it. But it's a way to not cut and do more cuts unnecessarily that impacts students on the front end. So I'm glad that we included that in this budget and is it correct that that would be in that other expenses area on the memo of the 1,440,000?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dulean. Ms. Carol Hubbard.
May I make a motion? I don't have a question, I wanted to make a motion.
Is the board ready to bring the motion forward? Go ahead, Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Move to approve revolution, or revolution, resolution, sorry, 2026-01, adoption of the fiscal year 26, school district approved budget for all funds totaling 230,272,277, which includes the operating fund totaling 194,916,462.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. We would like to open this up for public testimony. Is there public testimony on this item? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed and we will come back to the board for discussion and debate. Mr. Burgess.
I would like to move to amend the resolution to reflect state revenue of 121,21961. I'll speak to it if I get a second.
Second. It's been seconded. Go ahead, Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. So this is the amount that we would expect if the statute were being followed to provide a BSA increase of $700 as the HB 57 had set when the legislature passed it and overrode the governor's veto. The line item veto arguably is not following the statute at this point, the state law. We have heard that there is a lot of confidence in many legislators that the legislature will override the line item veto and I think it puts us in a better position to show what we are expecting of the state. We expect them to follow their statute and we need to be able to budget based on, we've created a budget that is already really slim. This also would mirror what the Anchorage School District is doing. So I think that leaving our state revenue at the $700 BSA gives us a little bit of extra leverage, aligns us with our partnering school districts, in our advocacy efforts. And it shows the story of what we actually need. I assume that the, if we did not meet that, the result would be the same, we would end up drawing from fund balance. So it's not, you know, I'll admit that it's a bit of a political move here, but I think that we need to tell the legislature what it is that we expect of them and what it is that we need to operate this school district. Thank you.
Mrs. Hardy.
Through the chair to the administration, I'm just wondering if that is legal for us to pass a budget that assumes state revenue that we don't know that we're getting.
I'll punt to Mr. DeGraw to see if he knows and if not, we can get legal consultation on that.
So as far as my knowledge is concerned, it is legal to pass a budget. Again, they're all projections and estimates, it would be similar to, there's nothing stopping this board from saying, we think we're going to gain 800 students next year and we would calculate state revenue based on those 800 students. And so as far as my understanding is concerned, it is legal. We would then, if this amendment passes, we'll then need to figure out where we have an increase in revenue on the expenditure side, where do we increase? A natural place to do that would be to not draw from fund balance, but to put those dollars into fund balance if the board didn't want to commit those dollars just to be on the conservative side, if that makes sense.
May I have a follow up to the maker of the motion?
Yeah, go ahead, Mrs. Hardy.
Mr. Burgess, is it your intent, sorry, that we do as what was described and essentially on paper, what we're saying is this is what we should have had and so this is what we're budgeting for, so we're not drawing our fund balance, but we're not advocating to spend the extra money at this time?
Yes, that is my intent.
I just want to jump myself in real quick. I apologize, board. And then we'll get back, I've got a couple people in the queue here. What would be your recommendation, Dr. Minor? I'm just a little lost with this, I apologize.
I think either way works. You know, I think it is a tool to communicate to the legislature and the larger community what that state revenue we feel like should be and what was passed by the legislature and so I think it's a good tool to do that. It's definitely unorthodox in my time in education, but if Mr. DeGraw is comfortable with it, then that's something that the board could move forward with.
Yep, Mr. DeGraw.
Yeah, I agree with those statements, a bit unorthodox, but we are in unorthodox times, I think, is that fair statement? What I will say is it doesn't, it doesn't alter the district's spending plan. So the board, the board is putting forth a spending framework for the district to follow next year. This would not fundamentally alter that funding, that spending plan. If the revenue comes in that we expect, if the veto is overridden, we'd have those extra dollars. The plan would be to set those dollars aside for a future year as the, you know, deficits continue, right? Hopefully not, but if they do, those dollars are set aside for a future rainy day. If the dollars don't come in, we're back to the numbers that are represented in the documents that you have before you right now. And so one of those two things is going to happen, either we would be increasing our rainy day fund, fund balance dollars, or we would be drawing on them and it wouldn't fundamentally impact the amount of staff we're looking to recruit and retain, our educational programs, schools, et cetera, et cetera. So I will just say that. While it is unorthodox, it would not put in jeopardy the plans that the district has in place that we'll put in motion July 1 for the next school year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeGraw. I have a few of you in the queue, but Ms. Maple has not spoken yet, so I'm going to let Ms. Maple jump in and then we're going to go Ms. Dulean, Mr. Doran, Mrs. Hardy.
I just wanted to say, I seconded it so that I could understand it and I am in support of it. I think that it is a powerful tool that we were told that there was an amount that we would receive, we budgeted appropriately and even that was incredibly difficult and it is reasonable for us to expect the state to come through. And like Mr. Burgess said, I've heard from plenty of legislators that are hopeful that this will happen and this makes it really clear that it's what we need, not just what we hope for. And Andy says it's legal, so. I mean, Mr. DeGraw, sorry.
Andy's fine.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Mrs. Dulean.
I'm going to speak in support of the amendment on the table. House Bill 57 was a bipartisan bill that passed with support from three quarters of our legislator, legislature, and it would have increased essential funding to our public schools. It reflects the will of the people and the needs of our educators and yet the governor has now line item vetoed the education budget after the bill survived of an initial veto was overwritten. It's still then, he line item vetoed it in the budget. We are in unprecedented times and we need to hold the line for our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Dulean. Mr. Doran.
I appreciate the innovation, but I am not in favor of it on several reasons. I think we have a responsibility to reflect actual, as near to actual as possible. State funding, that, the number in this amendment does not reflect state funding. And I share the frustrations of all, of so many, and particularly on this board. We have a governor who submitted a deficit budget, who said, I will let the legislature decide on the BSA, on the education support, and then did not follow through on what he said. The legislature acted this year. By the way, he's made the same comment last year, the legislature acted and, you know, this is a pattern that we see. Yes, we're here because of the governor's veto, but he controls the, he has that final say until the legislature overrides, if they override. It's a very, very close vote. To put this in, we're effectively saying, yes, I mean, the message is we think you should do this, but if they don't, it doesn't reflect where we're really at and I think it puts us in a more difficult situation for the following year. I also have a concern that, you know, I have a concern for whether the legislature will actually override based on past experience. We have a, actually a two-vote margin for not having an override. And though some of our local members have said, who voted for HB 57, said they would stay with their vote in favor of HB 57, they're only here, there are a lot more around the state and we don't have any commitments from them. The, I think that the message also needs to be what its impact on us. There are misnomers out there that school districts are flush with cash. We are not. Our fund balance is nowhere's near what it should be for an organization this size with the best accounting principles. We will wind up with about half what is recommended. And other districts are in similar situations. There are some that have a little bit more cushion, okay? Anchorage, okay? They're declining in their fund balance, but they have more of a cushion than we do. I think this is not a good route to go, but we do need to give the message that these are the impacts. The governor's veto means we cut. There are impacts in our classrooms because of the governor's veto. That message needs to be there. We can cushion it a little bit, thanks to a small draw on our general fund and the wherewithal of the borough to give us more this year, which reflects the, what is really in state law and encouragement for boroughs to support their local schools and there should not be restrictions on their being ability to do that. But our borough came through and they gave us more than what we had anticipated and that's why we're not as in, as dire straits now as we could have been. If we do not get an override in January, since the legislature has clearly said, we are not coming back until halfway through the year, you know, then we, you know, we can't spend it, so why say we've got revenue coming in that we know we don't have? That is not, does not reflect what the state revenue says. And in a sense, when we do our approved budget, we say, this is what we would like. But that's why we have to come back and balance. And so I don't feel this is a good move on our part. I don't think it's good strategically or in the eyes of responsible accounting.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Mrs. Hardy and then Ms. Maple.
When I joined this board, we had a zero fund balance. Over the three years, through the decisions of many board, or this board and its many board members, our fund balance has grown to an amount that is at least close to matching our board policies. Every dollar in that fund balance represents past board decisions to make very painful cuts in order to save for a rainy day. After the governor's veto, it's not just raining, it's a torrential downpour. I have voted on past budgets to cut beloved programs like ELP, which I benefited from as a child in this district, in order to not draw on that fund balance. In this circumstance, this large draw, or if we do it the other way, assuming state revenue is completely warranted, we did not fail to do our job or avoid making painful cuts during our budgeting process. Instead, we're here today because of the actions of one man who chose to ignore the voices of 46 of his colleagues and so, so many Alaskans to make an unprecedented cut to public education funding by not fully funding the BSA for the first time in Alaska's history. To add insult to injury, the veto amount also represents a cut to education funding even from last year. This board built a responsible budget expecting to receive an amount from the state that was just equivalent to what we were given last year in one-time funding and we had the rug pulled out from underneath us. We have made our cuts and now it's time for us to trust the 46 brave representatives who have voted not just once, but twice now to prioritize the future of Alaska, our children and their education. I will support this amendment because it clearly demonstrates that trust and reflects that we are, what we are legally do if the statute had been followed. In the end, the result is the same. Either the legislature proves that our trust is not misplaced and are willing to stand by the votes they've already made twice, or this board has to fully acknowledge and be prepared to utilize our very limited fund balance to close that gap while knowing that if the override does fail in January, the budget for next year will have to be based on a number below what is now BSA and statute because there is no way to rebuild this trust if they break it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Ms. Maple.
Ms. Hardy just said a lot more eloquently what I was hoping to get at. I just want to reiterate that it is reasonable for us to have this expectation and I think that taking the line item vetoes and further adjusting accordingly is giving the legislature permission to not follow through on their promise to support kids across Alaska. So I don't want to play into this, I don't want to accidentally play into making it appear that this is something we can work with because it is not.
Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. I just want to speak in support of the amendment. I think it's important for us to identify why we're here and I think it very clearly will identify why we're here. We had a balanced budget, we actually were looking at positive movement in our budget and now we're in this position and I think it just shows, it doesn't change the accounting at all, it doesn't change what we're saying we're going to spend, it just puts it out there to say, hey, this happened and it kind of documents it for everyone to see and I appreciate. everyone to see, and I appreciate that. Mr. Burgess, thank you.
I'm going to throw myself in. I've been really angry. Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. I have been beside myself for two weeks, and yeah, I'm going to break a little bit. I spent four months fighting in Juneau. I asked for policy. I sided with the governor and his policies. I tried to get the legislature to put things in that he wanted. I answered the call so many times to testify in front of Senate Finance and Senate Education and House Education. I mean, I was in front of them what seemed like every other week, if not twice a week. And I thought that we were making some good traction. I actually felt good about some things, but I had been saying it for three years, sitting right here in this seat, well, one of these seats, that it doesn't get better, that the cuts are going to keep coming. And in the paper, I said that I was shocked. I wasn't shocked at the cut. I knew that the cut was coming. I knew that we were going to be slashed somehow, some way. That was a given. What got me was how far and how deep this went. I took that as a slap in the face, not just to me, but to every person who spent the money, and it's not cheap to go to Juneau. I spent some of my own money to go there. People spent their own money. People spent district money. People spent other district monies. Association, like, tons of money went into doing this, to advocate for our students, our classrooms, our educators, all of our staff. And the legislature did what they were supposed to do, and I appreciate that, every single one of them. You know, they all fought in a different way. They might not have all sided with this, but they all fought in their own way, and each of them worked their tails off. This isn't on our legislators. Mrs. Hardy, you're right. This is on one person, and it's the governor. Governor Dunleavy did this, and I have been given so much crap over the last couple of weeks for the op-eds blaming Governor Dunleavy. But I will say it again, this is the governor's fault. He did this to Fairbanks, to the state of Alaska's children. We have spent years, years, doing this hard work. I have cut four schools out of this budget. Thirty million dollars. Somebody asked on this board, I think it was Mrs. Doolian, how much money has been cut? I did the math. Mrs. Hardy, since her and I have been on this board, $30.1 million is what we have cut from this budget. $30.1 million. That's a lot. I have nothing left, and so I am going to stand behind Senator Cronk and Representative Will Stapp, because I trust them, and I trust their votes, and I trust when they say that they're going to keep their votes till January, and they're going to override this thing. And I trust every other legislator out there who is also saying they're going to stand behind their votes. And I know that might be a very political thing for me to do from this seat, but I don't care. I'm done with politics over our students. Students before politics always. So I side with this. I'm sorry for the soapbox.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. Clarification to the administration. So I understand. So the, if we increase, if this passes, then passes, and increases the state revenue, our expectation of that. In terms of balancing the budget, we would be putting, well, I guess, let me say my concern. I would assume from previous administrative comments on it is that basically it goes into, we're not spending it, we're not saying we're going to spend that, but it goes into fund balance.
I...
Or it goes some, okay. My concern is that if we, if we say, in order to balance our budget, we just move this into fund balance, I would be really, really concerned about that, because we're just saying, "Oh, we're just saving more money."
Mr. DeGraw?
So, so I won't speak for Dr. Minut, from my, I'm speaking for myself. My concern is low so long as the excess goes into fund balance. And I'll, that would confirm what I said earlier. It doesn't change the spending plan of the district. If all of a sudden we assume higher revenue, and all of a sudden we're going to do this and this and this with it, and allocate it and speak for it, then I would have concerns from a financial perspective. But if, if the intent is to drop those dollars and we go back and do a new resolution that reflects the higher revenue and puts it into fund balance, my concerns are met.
Can I ask then this suggestion, and that it's reasonable, that if we go with the larger state expectation, that money that we are planning to take out of fund balance, if this state money is needed, let's use it for kids. Let's use it to do the classroom supports. Let's use it to maintain the, I mean, we're going to take, right now, the suggestion is 1.7 million out of fund balance. Why should we draw that out if we're expecting the state to pay for that? And what it, the messaging is that, you know, the transportation is going to cover that transportation. Take those away from fund balance, and let's use the money. The backup is that if the legislature does not come through, and want to say thanks to all the legislators that are there, and seven of the, or all but two of our interior delegation have supported these, that we're using the money directly for kids. We're saying, "That's state money for kids. We're using that." And, and so it's a, it's a small accounting adjustment, but it's actually applying it. So we're taking less out of our fund balance. And the message is, this is, and if you don't come through, you have an impact.
So, just a point of clarification, I want to make sure I understand what Mr. Doran just stated. Are you saying, Mr. Doran, to actually increase and add expenditures to the budget to reflect that higher revenue and spend the dollars on children and students?
No.
Okay.
No. It's keeping the spending plan exactly the same.
Intact, okay.
But with the messaging is, if we say this 4.5 million that we're expecting from the state, we don't have from the state, but we're expecting that 4.5 million, if we just say, "Well, we're going to, if that comes through, we're putting it into fund balance." That's the message we're adding to our savings.
Right.
But at the same time, we're, in our spending plan, we're taking money out of our fund balance.
Correct.
Why don't we allocate the state money, which we would normally do, to those spending and not take, not doing a draw in our plan, not adding to the dollars, but not doing a draw from fund balance? Because we don't need to. We have state revenue for it. And the message is clear. We're not just, we're not just adding to our savings account. We're using that money for kids. And so it's, in terms of accounting, it's putting it, it's putting that money that we expect from the state directly to use. But we're not spending more money at this time.
All right. I'm not sure I'm following all of this, but I believe what you're saying is a bit of a paper exercise anyway. So how it's going to work is that we would spend general funds first, and as Mr. DeGraw said, a $230 million budget is moving all of the time. And so we're not sure if revenues are going to exceed expenditures, or it's going to be the other way around. But we will spend general fund dollars first, and then if we get to the point where revenues are exceeding expenditures, then we draw on fund balance. And so I'm not sure that I'm following all of kind of your train of thought, but in terms of how the spending will actually work, we will use the general fund first and hopefully not dip into, you know, budgeted savings at that point in time.
If I might, yes, it is a paper deal, but it's the messaging, as this is a paper deal, to anticipate funding that we don't know whether we're going to get. And so it is a paper deal, but the messaging is, we're using, we, this state money is something we want to use for kids.
Can we take a brief adieze?
Brief adieze.
Thanks. Thank you for the minute. I just wanted to confer with Mr. DeGraw in terms of his following of your questioning. And so I guess my big question, Mr. Doran, is would you be proposing an amendment to the amendment that's on the floor? Does it change what Mr. Burgess has suggested in terms of the approach that we're taking?
I don't believe it does, because the dollar amount stays the same as what the amendment is on our revenue side. That doesn't change that. What it does do within our budget is, and I'll just focus on the 1.7 million that's right now in our budget as coming out of general fund, it would change that, because that would no longer be covered by general fund, it would be covered by the state revenue. Now, until we get those checks from the state, we, just as, if we have a higher enrollment, we need to hire teachers in September, we do that, and we know we're going to get that money back from the state. But, but it does mean we are not drawing, our spending plan would no longer say that we're drawing from the general fund. Okay? And on the other hand, it means less money that we're saying, "Oh, we're putting into savings." We're actually using the money that we're expecting from the state.
Got it. I understand that. Thank you.
And accounting-wise, to set, you know, and I would do the same thing for the 500,000 that we might have to subsidize transportation, that that would be covered by the state. So it, but it doesn't change the dollar amounts.
Okay.
That workable.
So just one clarification, if, and responding to Mr. Doran, your comments right there. Just to be clear, if the amendment passes, revenue will increase. Gotcha. Okay. And the board's required to pass a balanced budget, and so revenue will increase, and then the corresponding expenditure that would increase to balance that out would be a flipping of, instead of, instead of the fund, the other financing sources, 1,729, would disappear, and an increase to fund balance would appear to balance that out.
Yes.
Perfect. We're on the same page.
Mrs. Doolian?
Thank you. I, to that, to the point that, you know, to the point about using the funds to support students, I think it's very clear, at least I'm hearing, it's very clear from the board, that's what we want to do. And so I am in support of what Mr. Doran just put forward in how that would adjust the numbers on the amendment, or on the, on the actual memo. I think at this point, you know, I'm all for moving to start considering, you know, moving, taking action on this amendment. We have a manufactured crisis right now, which is manufactured by one person in the state, and that is our governor. It's incredibly, it's very humbling that we are all sitting up here today saying, "This is the line, and we are not going to go any further, and it's for our students." And we are going to reject the manufactured crisis that's at hand, and say we are trusting the legislators who have very boldly and very bravely stood up for students in the state, and stood up for educators in the state, and stood up to something that is a constitutional mandate in the state, which is public education. So with that, I think I would like to, if we're ready to call the question on the amendment.
I do have a couple more people in the queue, and I would like them to get to what they would like to. Okay. Mrs. Hardy?
I agree with Mr. Doran. I originally thought that's what we were doing, was removing the fund balance draw. It makes it much cleaner. And just because it was a verbal amendment, and I'm not sure, you increased the foundation funding by that 4,576,000 and change. Okay. So then it's assuming full statutory BSA. Like, we should be able to assume every other year that Alaska's had a BSA. My one piece then of a soapbox is, it's really unfortunate, because if we had had that money, we would have a surplus right now, and we would be able to add back teachers at Barnett. We would be able to add back high school counselors. We would be able to use the funds that our Borough Assembly gave us to spend on students to make things better, and because of one man, we have to be super cautious. And so that money could be sitting where it could be serving students. So once again, when we're talking about money belonging in classrooms and how we want every dollar to go to the classroom, the reason that it's like 1.2 we had surplus, or 2.5, there's so many numbers, of the surplus we thought we had two work sessions ago.
2.5.
2.5 million dollars we could be putting towards classrooms right now, and I absolutely would be, and we can't, and it's because of one person. And that's so unfortunate. And so when people talk about, "Why isn't money being spent on students?", that's why, because we can't trust. And right now, we're putting a giant leap of faith in those 46 very brave legislators, and I so hope that faith is not misgiven. I won't be on the board when we find out. We've been burned in the past, but that's the thing, is people grow and change, and I've seen that change in some of our legislators. I've seen how they've started to understand the problem, and so I'm willing to give them the grace of growth and hope that we value our students and we value our future. students and we value our future.
Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. And I'll just say that as the maker of the motion, I think that Mr. Doran actually did capture my intent. So I think we're all understanding that now. I, you know, I, I recognize that there's, there's risk in this, but as other members have said, we do need to hold a line somewhere. And this seems like the last place that it can be held, frankly. We have cut so much and our students are missing out because of it. Our community is missing out because of it. You know, when we look into next year, I have a lot of concerns already. But this is the kind of situation where either we hold a line and we might, we might realize that risk and, you know, or we choose to, we choose not to hold the line and then next year we find ourselves in just as bad a situation and less ability to hold that with more damage to the district even. I think this is, I appreciate the support from board members because I think this is the right move. And again, it mirrors what the Anchorage School District has done with their budget adjustments. We, I just, it's, it's hard for me to, to, to express just how devastating the cuts that we've already made have been. To cut further is just unfathomable to me. And while, while there is a risk here, again, it doesn't actually change the spending plan. So one way or another, it's going to end up the same way whether we increase this amount or not. But, but I do think that this is, this is showing what we expect and that is helping us to hold the line when we have cut down to the bone. There's nothing left to cut. We have to hold it here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Is there anything further from the board? Seeing nothing, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the amendment to the motion? Mr. Burgess, if you could restate your motion real fast.
Yes.
For the record.
The motion was to increase the state revenue to a total amount of 121,21,961.
Thank you. Mrs. Richardson, please call the vote.
Mr. Doran?
No.
Hardy?
Yes. Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Doolian?
Yes.
Cheryl Hubbard?
Yes.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Now that brings us back to the motion on the floor as amended. Is there any more discussion from the board? Mr. Doran?
Through the chair to the administration, well, no, to the whole board really, because the consideration that our board really supports the administration in putting together a potential additions list. It doesn't have to be done immediately. I'm not asking for that, but that as we enter the new school year, that we put together a potential additions list for middle of the year. Not necessarily that it would need to be exact, but there might be a range of things that are on it and we can choose from that as we get closer and see that. But the reason for that is because in, in essence, right now, we're taking no risk in changing our revenue stream because we're not spending more. But if we really think this is going to come through, we should be ready to act on it in that reasonable timeframe, be ready to act as soon as we know a definiteness from the state. And I think that does open the door for some of the things that we were brainstorming a couple of weeks ago when we thought we might have a surplus, things we might put back. I mean, some have been mentioned this, already this evening, this afternoon. But I think that's important in going along with the resolution as amended right now that some of that might go into savings simply because of the timing of the year and such like that and reasonableness because of the following year. We know we're otherwise looking at a deficit. We need to look at that. So, so I'm just saying the big package, but I think that's important in keeping with our resolution and, and especially as amended, that we can then present the legislators with and the governor with that these are the things that could have been started early. We're ready to go to benefit kids and what it means for us going into the next fiscal year.
Mr. Burgess.
Appreciate those comments from Mr. Doran. I would be supportive of asking the administration to create an ad list. And as we discussed last night, I think, you know, we also should develop a, a potential cut list if the override veto or if the override vote fails. And recognizing that a cut list in the middle of the year might mean we've got to cover it with fund balance in the situation that we're in. I think that if we do, if that is the extent of our cut list, it would be very, very important to just include an explanation of what that means for the district's future and the impact to our emergency contingencies and so forth. But I, I am supportive of, of that idea to, to develop a, an add back list. Thank you, Mr. Doran.
Ms. Maple.
Um, I, like, the end of, of Mr. Burgess's piece there, I, rather than a cut list explaining what the, what would have, like, what the implications of using fund balance would be, but that that is what I would, you know, after our, our work session yesterday, I think that we came to almost a consensus that we are not interested in making further cuts at this time. And so having that cut list, quote unquote, actually just kind of be an explanation of what the implications of using the fund balance are, it makes a lot of sense to me. I, at this point, I am hesitant to ask the administration to do any more work on imagining that we have additional funds. It seems unfair. But I understand the intention, but I, I, I don't know. You guys have put forth so many suggestions and I don't want to ask for more.
Dr. Minor.
We're happy to put forward cut lists, ad lists, whatever the board would be, what would be helpful for the board. I think what's interesting here, and disappointing is not the right term because it's not powerful enough, but it's the word that's coming to my mind of how disappointing it is that we're talking about addition lists or cut lists or all of these unstabilizing factors in the middle of a school year when in January, we really should be talking about the FY27 budget, but yet we're still going to be talking about the FY26 budget and what we could have done to help school and students at the beginning of the year. There's not much that you can add in in the middle of the year that's going to really impact student achievement. We've been talking about that a lot. The people that have been holding education funding over our heads have talked about how we're not, you know, meeting the standard that they would like us to meet, but yet we continue to improve a year after a year. And so it's just incredibly frustrating that we're having these conversations where we should be developing a budget tonight that reflects the priorities of our school district and will actually improve student achievement, but yet we're talking about potentially doing mid-year budget cycle revisions because of the instability that the governor has placed on us. So want you to know, happy to do cut lists, addition lists, middle of the year, but none of this would have been necessary if the governor would have signed off on HB57 and we would have received adequate funding. And I say adequate funding because it's not enough funding for what we needed. The legislature started at a $1,400 BSA, BSA increase, and that was closer to what we actually needed. It was a compromise down to 700. And so, yes, I am excited and thankful for legislators that supported that $700 BSA increase, but let's remind everybody that we're talking about a $17.8 million deficit that the board worked through.
Mrs. Doolian.
Thank you for that, Dr. Minor. Um, I, I would like to say that I feel like we already have our add back list and we already have a cut list because we've done this work when we assumed in our, before we even went into our budget cycle, we were considering with House Bill 69, a $1,000 BSA, which still would not have gotten us up to inflation-proofing the BSA from 2017. So we, we know, we were very clear on this board, that we prioritize low class sizes. You said tonight that over the last 10, within the last decade, high school classes have increased by 10 students. We now have elementary to the, through the chair to the administration, elementary is now at, is it 28 students in a class? 28 students in a class. We increased 27, 20, 20, we have increased 26. We have increased, we have increased our class sizes this year by one student in every single class. We have outsourced shift custodians in the evening, which was not an easy decision. We have closed three additional elementary schools. I closed my own child's school. We are holding the line today and I am so proud to be standing here among every single one of us that is standing up for students. We have one person in this state that seems to be holding our students hostage. And to what end? Students are the future of our state. They're the future of our workforce. They're the future of a thriving Alaska that's going to unleash, unleash the potential of our state and drive us forward. We are the Arctic State. We are a strategically positioned state in the United States of America. We have potential. The eyes of the world are on the Arctic and we are here in Fairbanks, Alaska, and we have so much potential to thrive. Imagine what we could do if we had sufficient funding for public education. Imagine the career and technical education courses we could have that, that drive students to be working in our trades so that people have really good lives, good livings, a thriving economy. That's the type of Alaska that we can have. But it starts with investing, investing in the future and investing in students. And I am so darn proud to be sitting here today with every single one of you up here because that is what we are doing. We are standing up for students. We are holding the line. And this is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Doolian. Anything further from the board? Mr. Doran?
I want to thank people for their comments and Dr. Minor's perspective that he just shared. And when I ask about additions, that does not exclude the, the putting into the fund balance because we, we will be looking forward. And so I want to make that clear. We don't have to spend it all, especially since we get it late. But the other thing that I think, and I, I sense this is the feeling of the board, we should not be even talking about a cut list in, for January if the, this doesn't get, doesn't get overridden. The governance action does not get overridden because, but that I think it's the intent of the board, and tell me if I'm wrong, but the intent of the board, that if we don't get that money from the state, that we're just going to take it from fund balance as, prior to that amendment, we were expecting. So I think, and I, I bring that up only because people here are saying, well, cut list in January, what's going to be on it? Who's going to be on it? Am I going to be on it? And so I would just say, we are not looking at a cut list. If the state does not come through, whatever that need is, we're, we're just taking out a fund balance, which we would have done otherwise. And, and we're not looking at any cuts. If anything, we might do something. Otherwise, it's going to help us in FY27. So if, that's my piece, just that there is no cuts in January.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Mrs. Hardy.
Mr. Doran's point, as Dr. Minor has said, there's very little we can cut in January unless we were going to do something like cut all of our spring activities, which would be catastrophic to so many of our students. That's not just sports. As Dr. Minor has pointed out, that's all the things, that's academica. I mean, we have national champion academica teams that we'd be defunding. It's not the right time, but this board is going to face, like, just so everyone understands the gravity, if the veto override is unsuccessful, this board should assume that the funding that Governor Dunleavy vetoed is what will be the baseline for next year. So I don't have the number memorized like I do with the BSA, but essentially a $500 BSA increase, which is less than the 680 one-time funds, that's your new baseline. That's a lot of cuts. And this board is entering negotiations, so you have to factor in increases and all the other things. Fiscal year 27 does not look good. We need to have everyone understand, yeah, we can ride it out this year on fund balance, but you don't have the fund balance to cash that check next year. And there's no guarantee that the assembly can do what they did this year again. I would hope that they'd at least be able to get us to 60 million, but that additional 2.7 that came out of their savings, so the deficit will only get bigger. And to Dr. Minor's point of our community needs stability, closing more schools does not provide us stability. So to those legislators, I see some of your staffers in the audience, please, Fairbanks can't take any more cuts. It can't. We're done.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Anything further from the board? Mr. Burgess.
Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Hardy. That is exactly how I feel. We are at the end of, of our fiscal rope, so to speak. This, and, and part of the reason that I'm willing to take a little bit of risk with this budget is because if we have to see similar cuts next year, if we don't get the funding that is now in the statutory BSA, I, there's no, there's no path forward for this district. We can't pretend that we can offer equality education at that point. And I, I, you know, it's, it's one of those situations where you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't, right? So I'm banking on the legislature pulling through those 46 legislators, holding true to their word and making sure that this veto is, is not sustained. Appreciate the work of this board. This has been a really hard year. I thought last year was hard. I thought last year's budget was hard. This year, we had to cut even more after seeing the impacts that last year's budget had on our district. Closing schools, increasing class sizes, cutting programs. I've had enough. Enough is enough. And we need to move forward and hold this line.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Anything further from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the motion as amended?
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Doolian?
Yes.
Cheryl Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The board now has an approved budget. With that, we will move into board comments. I know we don't see it on the agenda, but I thought I would allow the board any final, since this is our last meeting till possibly August. We'll start, Mrs. Hardy.
I didn't really prepare any comments, other than, as has been shared, this meeting tonight makes me proud. So, I'm happy to end on this note.
Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. I also haven't prepared anything, but I just want to reiterate, we are, we are, we've balanced a budget. We've done a lot of hard work to get there. It's taken us months. It's been emotional. It's been exhausting. It's been hard on this community. And the source of all of that pain, all of that hardship, and the need for those hours and hours of work by this administration, by this board, by community members advocating for our students, that was necessary, as folks have said, because of one person. Because we have a governor who is rigidly unwilling to compromise despite getting concessions that he wanted, that is holding our students hostage for purposes that don't seem to be clear. When we see the successes that he and others have asked for, we have, we have a legislature that worked together to come up with a bipartisan bill that included policy compromises. We did everything that was asked for and we still get a veto. We have to stand up to that. And that's what we're doing here with this, with, with this choice to support the amendment. Thank you, board members. And with this budget, we're not only trying to do what's best for our students in this district, we're also sending a message. This is it. Enough is enough. We will not make any more cuts. We need the legislature to pull through for us so that we can survive this year and next. We have to make budgets that draw on our fund balance so we can wait out a governor who is not funding education. That's what we will do. And we need the legislature to pull through and back us up and make sure that our students are going to be okay. Thank you.
Ms. Maple?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
I, with the increased class sizes of plus one across all grades, already budgeted for the 2026 school year, by the reduction of many teachers, I am very, very pleased that we are holding the line. No more increased PTR, at least for this year. Our actions today are in keeping with the number one strategic priority of deed, which is to support all students to read at grade level by the end of third grade. With the great achievements that our entire district has made in reading literacy, I am very supportive of keeping staff strong from K through three and all the way through grade 12. I will also say that I would love to make a presentation of the accomplishments of our students K through three next year, if I can help do that. Dr. Minor, I would love to do that. I think we need a presentation on that so that everybody really understands what's happening because it's very exciting. Thank you to the Borough Assembly for your additional support for the upcoming school year. We would be in so much deeper water without your additional support this year. And although we aren't able to use these funds to improve and enhance the classrooms and programming, we're still very grateful that we can hold the line as it stands today. So, a huge thank you. I want to thank all of the board members, all of you, for supporting class sizes and for not increasing even by .5. We all know that our students are the ones who pay when we have to increase class sizes. So, again, thank you. I too am incredibly proud to be working with all of you and I appreciate all of you. I want to thank Senator Cronk and Representative Stap for their bold support of education and for their commitment to hold the line by overturning the Governor's line item veto of education. I'm hopeful that the other representatives and senators statewide will support education, will support our local schools, and support their communities by overturning the Governor's line item veto of education, which will enable us to pay back our own savings account. We're rolling the dice today. So, we're, we're, we're investing. Please invest in the education. Invest in the future. Our students are the future and unless we give them the support they need, we are cutting off our own future, which is not smart. Alaska, let's be smart and let's support our students. Thank you again to the administration for all of your hard work for the entire school year and especially on this additional budget work that you've done. Thank you to all the teachers and the students for all of your hard work over the past year. Your accomplishments have been noticed and we want you to know that we will do everything we can to continue supporting you. We encourage you also to keep reading all summer long.
Mrs. Julian.
Thank you. Governor Dunleavy's continued attacks on public education is what is driving families and professionals out of our state. Teachers are leaving, communities are suffering, and the very fabric of Alaska, our shared commitment to a free and fair public education system is being unraveled. We, the people of Alaska, we must come together to demand that our governor stop playing political games with our children's future. Uphold the Constitution. Uphold the Constitution. Fund our schools and start investing in the promise of every single Alaskan child, not just the ones who can afford to choose something different. Let's reject this manufactured crisis and fight for what we know is right. Public education belongs to all of us and we're not giving it up. To the educators, you, you are the ones who have been holding the line through all of this. You have been making sure, you have been stepping up every single day, showing up year after year, day after day, hour after hour, again and again and again. You keep showing up and holding that line for our students. And I am so proud to be joining you today in saying, yes, this is the line and it is not going to be crossed. To the legislators, Senator Cronk, Senator Kawasaki, Representative Carrick, Representative DiBert, Representative Stap, those interior legislators who were so brave and stood up multiple times, again and again, for education, thank you. Thank you for holding the line. To the families and parents and the community members, you're part of the equation too. It's now also up to you to continue to remind people in Juneau that this is important. We are standing here united for our students and we need you, the community, to remind Juneau that this line is being held and we need them to continue to hold that line come January when they re-enter session. I want to thank every single board member on this board. It is a deep honor to be here today, to have worked through this budget and to have gotten to a place of integrity where we are prioritizing students above everything else. Thank you.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. I've got several things and I will start with, without repeating all the comments that have already been made because I think they're right on, but I do want to say a special thank you to our, the members of our interior delegation, Senator Kawasaki, Senator Cronk, Representative DiBert, Representative Carrick, and Representative Stap for their votes for HB 57. And I would invite the other members of our interior delegation to reconsider their no votes when it comes time to vote on an override. The importance of that voice, to really say, we have something for education. A no vote actually represents continuing doing nothing for public head. And so, thanks for those who voted yes in HB 57 and we hope we'll see all of those voting yes on the override. I also want to thank the news media. I know we're being broadcast on the radio. We have representatives from the newspaper, from TV. That's in a powerful message and I really appreciate those reporters who are helping with that and, and the associations that they're, they're with because this is an important public conversation. And, so, thank you for being here and those who are on the radio doing that, that piece of it. I want to make sure as we talk about budget, that we keep in mind regarding borough contributions. Our borough has been thanked for adding more this year than actually we've ever seen in total, in terms of the local contribution. And, and that was on two fronts. It was in our initial conversations, getting to a recommended budget by April 1, that basically the mayor and the Assembly gave us a positive commitment to try and raise the local contribution. And then in the final analysis, they raised that again. And I point that out because it's a tribute to our borough, our community, to support public education. But there is also a move in the state by the administration to limit what boroughs can do to support public education. And there are regulations that are out for public comment right now that will be taken up by the state board. And I will say that it was because of public outcry that when the attempt was to pass new regulations without a public comment period, the board backed, state board backed off. They want to limit what local communities can do to support schools in their community for their kids. And though the immediate impact would not have much of a, an effect within Fairbanks, down the line, it could. And it does affect kids across our state, many of whom come here to go to school as parents, families move. We exchange students on a regular basis in the state. And so, this is of local interest as well for us. So, I would ask people to look at that and to raise their voice in opposition to those changes. Local communities should be able to support their schools to the extent that they would Also, in the area of thanks, I would like to thank Ms. Hardy. This might be your last meeting and you have commented and been public in terms of not running again, that you will be teaching, you'll be moving. And I think it would be remiss for us not to really be able to say thank you to you. Your passion for kids is absolutely evident. Your passion for public education, your willingness to fight and speak up is not only significant and so needed for our kids, we focus on why we exist, but you, you've raised questions. I love the way you push me in thinking, okay, as you do others. And the important thing is not necessarily whether we agree on everything or not or disagree, that's not the issue. It's that you get us thinking. And it does reflect well on you to, in terms of where your heart is. And so, I really want to say thank you for what you've contributed to our community. I wish you the best and the fact that you, from everything I understand, you're, you're geared to be in the classroom where your, your heart and soul is and, and those kids can benefit from you. And so, I didn't want this time to pass to really say thank you and, and appreciate what you have offered to us over these years. And you'll offer it now in a new community. And finally, with part of that is where it's, we're saying see you, not goodbye, but it does mean that we face a vacancy on our board. And I would encourage us to look forward with that. So, it would be great to have the possibility of someone being appointed to the board for our meeting in August. But I would hope that we can be forward planning in terms of that, starting to get ready for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. I appreciate your comments, but I do believe those were deserved to be made by Mrs. Hardy herself. With that, I would just like to make a few comments myself. This board has carried the weight of some of the most difficult decisions any board in recent history has had to make. That's real. We've contracted custodial services. Those are working families like mine. I come from a working family that, we contracted that. Closed three schools this year, four in my term, seven altogether. Eliminated vital programs. Educators, staff members, all of them gone. These decisions were not made lightly and they will sit with each of us long after tonight. Yet, even with these painful cuts, we know that the road ahead also does not get easier. We are managing a crisis. We are not solving it. We're not going to solve it next year. We're not going to solve it the year after that. We want to. We have a big problem. And while these words will be mocked by many, the state of our education system, as has been said, is in dire need of meaningful attention. Also needs sustained investment, sustained investment from the state and from our governor. Our students deserve so much more. Our educators deserve so much more. Our communities deserve better than this. Our communities deserved, deserve better than to be asked year after year to tolerate a school closure, year after year to tolerate more jobs lost. This budget reflects our best efforts with the hand we have been dealt. Isn't that sad? It also reflects a system stretched beyond its limits, right here in our own very town. We hope that our voices are heard tonight in Juneau. And we hope that real solutions can follow because this does not get any better. To anyone out there who is deciding to run for these seats, know that this work, this work ahead of you, it's not good. This will not be This will not be easy. And we will go to bed every single night, living with each decision that we have made, knowing we're going to have to probably make twice as hard ones next year. And that's hard to believe that there could be twice as hard decisions to come because we've made so many. Thank you, administration, for your work since November. We've put you through hell, sorry, radio. We we have. I work in radio, we can say that. Board, you've been through it too, twice, three times as much, to process everything that came from administration, to process everything that came from the public and to sit with it and to formulate where you have come. This work has been enormous and each and every one of you deserves so much. And I just hope that everybody out there has a great summer. I hope that. I just hope that we can get through this. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are now adjourned.